Could you call real call please? Listen.
Mr. Wazowski?
Here.
Mr. Hodges?
Here.
Mr. Garber?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Thanks, gentlemen. General review and adoption of meeting agenda. Does anybody have any questions concerning this?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we have amended agenda before us, and I move we adopt that.
Sorry.
Any discussion?
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Wazowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Next time we have a general work session matters on Board A, update from Virginia Peninsula's Public Service Authority, David Diagnett, David Director.
First of all, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you today. I guess I first want to speak about our response to COVID and why we made some of the decisions that we did. I've assisted in cleanups from hurricanes, tornadoes, fires, ice storms. I've been involved in large logistic projects like who was that? Sands Hotel and Casino in New Jersey, Dominion Energy. COVID-19 was unlike anything I've experienced. We learned many lessons from this pandemic. Key among them was the quick change from commercially generated waste to residential waste and how it overwhelmed not only us but many systems throughout country. Everything that comes into our sites must be consolidated and delivered elsewhere. The weekends is where we had the biggest issues. At the time, our disposal options were limited by operating hours and in some cases, the facilities were closed. Largest volume of incoming material is the trash. And the landfills where we deliver most all of this material close starting midday on Saturday and don't open again until Monday morning. Of course, the busiest time for incoming material from the residents is on Saturday and Sunday. I admit that our first attempt, my first attempt, was based on a worst-case scenario. Having no experience to draw from, couple of weeks as the new executive director while still in the capacity of Director of Operations, my first plan should have been my second plan. After some data review, feedback from the communities, we realized that we didn't need to shut down, but we just needed some room to breathe to make sure that we didn't run out of room for all the material. Ultimately, we asked the residents to self-limit what they brought to the sites, focusing on the central materials. With everyone home, they were generating more, more of everything. Between FY19 and FY20 for February through April, King William had an additional 129 tons of material, which was 28 containers additional above and beyond what normally do. System-wide, every category was up over the same period from FY19. I think we're safe for a few years with this type of cleanup. So in the fall, if we do have a relapse, I don't believe the home projects will be like the ones from this first round, partially because money's tight and people out of work and because I think they've already bought everything. Our safety protocols are going to remain in effect. We learned that there was room for improvement in our means of communication with staff. We're making changes that are, we were making changes that weren't reaching everybody in a timely manner. And the worst part was the message was losing effectiveness in second and third-hand explanations. We now have a simple form that resides at every site, posted, easy to find, providing 911 information, site address, days, hours of operation, and acceptable materials. We have brochures and operating rules, but this is a much easier format. With the pandemic, we had to move many more people to sites that we didn't, we had to fill vacancies. We also have our new employee portal. Our new employee portal is a method for staff to view videos and handouts. It allows us to explain a new plan or program in one consistent message and allows the employees to revisit if they have any questions or just need a refresher. Like everyone else, we've had issues with hiring staff. Some can be attributed to the type of work. Garbage isn't really glamorous. Or the long hours, environmental issues, cold, hot, rain, snow. But once they're here, most stay with us for long periods of time. In fact, we've had several of them that have been here for almost 30 years. Another potential difficulty in hiring is the potential, is possibly the potential site that we have, which is the old, when we were building the regional jail about 30 years ago, we had the trailer from when they were doing the construction. Fortunately, we're in the process of rebuilding, so we're currently interviewing off-site, and I think that'll help us bring people in. When you live with someone that has a Six Sigma Black Belt with a focus on continuous improvement, it becomes part of you as well. We are working on empowering staff, collaboration, working with new ideas, and even dusting off some of our old ideas. As we are reviewing our processes for efficiency, we have a great staff, it's time for us to listen to them. I believe that regional plans work, not just because I worked for one. I think it offers opportunities for cities and counties through economy of scale. We can offer programs regionally that one city or county could not have the resources to go alone. As a regional governmental organization, we benefit through our participation in state programs, FAGO, VRS, EBA, our tax-exempt status, our reduced rates for farmers, to mention a few. Those savings are reflected in the number and the types of services provided to all the communities. As part of the regional program, you participate in the Household Chemical Program, the Debris Management Program. I heard you were talking about some of the trees that went down, although this is not, I saw one at West Point when I was coming through. When there's a, when there's a wide, when there's an emergency, we have a plan in place to take care of those things. VISA has assisted in many cleanups. We were talking about the tornado in Essex as I was coming in here. We've placed cans at Dick Campbell's place for years, now for the rural tans. We did the Mount Olive Project cleanup. We had an erosion control issue at the King William Park where we put in several hundred, I'd be close to 1,000 cubic yards of mulch to control the erosion problem. We did the landfill cleanup, all done in-house without additional cost at King William. Lastly, Mr. Hudson area mentioned services at all the sites. Staff and I will look into reinstating the closed days at the sites from previous budget-related requests. We will look to expanding services at the existing sites where it makes sense in the coming months. Thank you, and I'm hoping for any questions if you may have.
How much greater was this than I've almost bring cleanup would be?
Well, over the last three years, the, we've actually had an increase consistently. We had, we're 101, 101 poles, 400 tons over where we were at this same time period from 18. And as I said, we're 129 tons and 28 poles. Poles are the containers that we fill up. Every Monday morning, I get a container status report on how many containers are full. We're averaging 55 full containers of trash, tires, paper, metal, all the materials that people bring to the site that we have to take off the site. So we're playing catch-up because all the sites are closed. So we're playing catch-up on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday to get ready for Thursday, Friday, so that we can be, so we can have all our empty containers for Saturday and Sunday when everybody comes in.
What are your learning factors as far as increases, labor or containers, trucks?
Limiting factors in moving the material? Well, we try really hard not to, you know, put more trucks and drivers on the street. We're managing, although this storm certainly told us that we need to look at several things, and we are. We're looking at our efficiencies. We didn't do full container reports where I now have them every morning. So I'm looking at ways to be more efficient. Before I look at trucks and drivers, we want to make sure that we're moving everything as efficiently as possible.
Yeah, that's not in your report that you look at possible brush sites, want to, or community. When you're speaking of community, are you speaking countywide or just like at work?
Well, you know, we've looked at, during emergencies, because, you know, the brush, putting brush on a site, we're still going to have to do something. We're going to have to bring somebody in to grind it. We have, you know, I'm sure you guys understand, we have a 22-acre compost facility in York that's part of the regional program. The mulch that we get up here, we deliver from that facility. It's expensive. It's not, those grinders are $750,000 each. They don't transport really well, and they're, you know, although we can certainly get people, in storms like this, it is prudent to have sites that can accept large quantities of brush, because then we can focus on the essentials of moving the trash and then have the people stood, like storms, just we, we have a place for people to bring brush unencumbered.
Because normally brush could grind it in downstream with everything else.
That's correct. Well, unfortunately, you know, we've looked at this over the years. Our current tipping fee at the regional landfill is $25 a ton. The cost to grind it ends up being closer to $60 or $70 a ton. So in our attempts to keep costs down as low as possible, that's why we ask people to cut it into four-foot sections and deliver it to the sites. Because at four foot, we found, and this is just experience, you can get a two-by-four that can sit correctly right, and if it's an eight-foot two-by-four, it can go right through the side of the container, which, you know, so by cutting it in four-foot sections, it is a little inconvenient to cut some of that stuff. That's why we don't, we don't ask people to cut their sofas, but the things that make sense, we do ask them to cut so that it doesn't damage the equipment.
Did your administration tell your employees to cut back on what you did on the day? Was it done by the camera?
No, sir. That was, that was something that we discussed. I sent out memos to all the, to all of the communities and said, this is what we're attempting to do. And at first, we were going to limit the days. We weren't sure what was going to happen with the pandemic, and quite frankly, I was panicking, thinking, I'm not going to have any employees to accept the material, trucks, truck drivers to move the material. And, and, you know, my first, what I said in here, I said, my first, my first plan should have clearly been my second plan. What we finally determined was that, you know, what was essential was making sure we had room for people to bring the trash. The, once the tire pans filled, we'd take the tires. Unfortunately, the only current place to take them probably is Ford. And their prices continue to go up. The last can we got from York County, just disposal loan was $920 for one container. It's, it's, so what we were trying to do was, we were trying to keep the sites open without interruption for the essential materials so that, you know, that they had room to give them their day-to-day trash. Brush is not going to go bad sitting in the yard. Tires, we can take them, but if you kept it home for a month or two, and that's what we ended up trying to do was, and so it's, we filled up a lot of containers and we're still doing it. I, like I said, I, I think that people did every honey-do project that they possibly could think of, so I think we're good for a couple of years. I really do. I, it's amazing. I, I, you know, I've talked to people throughout the state, and they have all told me the exact same thing, that they were overwhelmed. Several communities shut down facilities left and right. We were, I had a hiccup at first, and I admit that, I apologize. I'm sure, you know, it was, Bobby called me up and said, he is not good. So, and I admit we're wrong.
That did complement.
I'm sorry?
That did complement.
Yes, yes, sir. The, the bad idea, yes. It was, I was, I was told it was a bad idea. I, I, I apologize. But again, I, I haven't had a COVID before. I don't know, I've been, been around for a while. This is, this is all new territory. But I'm very proud of our staff. You know, I've got six people out in the transfer system right now. We have 54 employees total. I have six out in the transfer system. Some of them were elderly people that said, look, I'm just, I'm taking a chance, and I respect that. So I'm out six there, I'm out two in the administrative office, and I'm out one in our compost facility.
That old angel get it out. I work with public every day.
I understand. These guys are in their 80s and they're. It was a personal choice in my respect.
Correct.
Yeah, I think I probably did a good answer. Look, I was one to be really hard on you guys at the start because, you know, we were getting a lot of very negative feedback. And so I think Bill and I were probably the two being the hardest on you through, through way five. So because of that, I will say that since we ironed all those issues out, you and your folks have done an outstanding job keeping everything with it. So be hard on you, and I want to thank you more than also compliment you with the job you've done, so you'll do the next one justice.
Yeah, that's much better.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
And for the discussion, for being willing to adapt the plan as you received email, because not everybody who's been willing to do that, so.
We're, we've always considered ourselves just another, you know, another department in each of the 10 cities and counties that we operate. Because that's exactly what we are. One more department for you. So I understand and I appreciate it, and we're, we're not perfect. I guarantee you though, if we, if we do something, we will try to correct it to the best of our ability.
One thing, you know the highways are terrible. We didn't want that experience also. And I'm out with visitor that's out there. People want to dispose of it somewhere.
Yes, they are.
Two questions from my, one, the landfill down here next to Colossi. They were having some issues with the compactor down there. That's not the one I use, I think we straightened that out yet.
Yep.
Okay, good. And then secondly, was just kind of more of a broader operational question with the markets being all messed up with this too. The commodities markets have been all over the place as well. What's that done to recycling recovery? I know it's been bad, it's been being worse, I have that. Yeah, what's this?
That's a great question. Well, apparently, photo paper's on the rise.
Yeah.
So mixed paper, two months ago, we were getting a dollar a ton for mixed paper. Today, my, our final rates were in, and we're going to get $20 a ton. That's good. We were at $45 a ton for OCC or cardboard. This month, we're getting aluminum. So that's good. The rest of the material is, you know, the aluminum, the plastic, it's all processing. That's a little more problematic. The numbers are okay with that, but unfortunately, we're now, we just got a new contract, so we're, instead of going to County Waste in West Point, we're now going to Tyler Fire in Chester. And we're going from, we were receiving $10 a ton for all that material. Now we're limiting some of the plastics that we accept, and we are working diligently. In fact, our employee portal is working overtime to make sure that our attendance don't give people the wrong information. But the, you know, that's going to a cost, but this is all a soft set, the recycling business. And I, I don't see the numbers being the way that they used to, you know, several years ago. But I see them coming back, and I see more domestic markets, and I see that right now, more domestic markets.
That's good, isn't it?
So I think, I think in the long run, it's going to be a good thing. We're not going to get the high dollars, but I think we're going to get a consistent dollar, and I think we're going to end up being able to recycle more.
Good.
Don't we have a specific compost area between Colossi and West Point that can be just for brush? Is that really small?
There is. That's a private. And in fact, when we did the, when we did the landfill cleanup, we ran, I had four trucks running five days straight, just running all the brush that was there. But that is a private entity.
I was about to say. That was correct.
And another thing that just something to throw at you, I know our previous boards had a lot of issues about this, and that's why we cut back and shut down some of the site. But do you think, and it may be true that we were told that people from other counties use our county, and that you don't get to tell them because you all want to check it the way it comes out. We used to have a sticker, you used to have to check. Do you think people are coming in since they can't do it their own, using ours more excessively, which makes it a little more burdensome for you?
That's, that's a great question. You know, the, the one nice thing about having attendants that work consistent, consistently at the sites is that they have a pretty good idea of who the people are. We talked about just putting together a decal. You know, it's, you know, it's, we'd be happy to do it. We'd be happy to check. It just, people just don't drive that far, honestly. You know, I'm, I'm sure there's some, because I've talked to people in King and Queen that said, yeah, I stopped by our site in King William. But then I hear the people from King William go, yeah, I go to the one right there in King and Queen, so it's easier.
What about the contractors that are doing work lovely, whether they all?
Contractors, we do, we do check. We do, we do, if they're, you know, if they're bringing in, you know, but if it's a business in King William, then, you know, we, they're supposed to ask them, are you a business? And again, most of these guys know these, but if it's a, if they have, you know, a whole bunch of work, they're bringing in C and D material, construction demolition, and it's, you know, they do ask for, for information from where they're, so we can check it out.
One more thing.
No, sure.
Do you have any more scheduled outs on chemical collections in the area? Is, are you aware of any?
Well, actually, we now, the board approved the, everybody going to any one of them. And normally, we have two. We have one coming up in August here. It's actually going to be in Middlesex, but we have one this weekend in James City County. And the residents from King William are, you know, they can go down there and make a day, go shopping. There's, I'm not on the tourist board, but, no, it's, they can go to any one of them. We have 16 on the middle peninsula, oh, no, peninsula, excuse me, and we do two up here. You know, we wanted to do more. Our plan was to have more events, but the participation that we had was somewhat lackluster, and the cost to run these was so, you know, but we would be happy to do more. If there's a need for it, we're happy to put as many out here as we need. Household chemicals is good, though. And honestly, it's one of those events that people are always appreciative. An opportunity to get rid of their, their old paints and fertilizers, bad gas from the boat.
And all that stuff, so.
Yeah, well, the one that, between eight and four, I'll be there, I'll be with, I'll have a mask on, I'll be working the site, or a little shorthanded.
Where is that at? Is it over there?
It is, but it's at the Lower Hill High School, which is right off 60 and 199. So it's actually really easy to get to, it's right by the James City County Police Department.
Something on a similar situation, talking about, and I know it's been dropped with some of the shares definitely, people are asking about old propane cylinders, that nowadays we can't take them anywhere here, but I was told that we can take them to like Henrico for free since we don't have to take them here. Is that correct or not?
Well, Henrico's not, although I will check with my son, he does work for Henrico, I will find out. We have had, we were taking the propane, and we still can, we just don't advertise because there's several of the metal facilities that will accept them from us.
You've got to take it valid.
And they don't, they don't want us to advertise it because they, they're afraid they're going to get inundated. When we put names for where you can take stuff on the website sometimes, they get, and we get calls saying, take my name off. It's way too many.
But they said they had asked us, the citizens, they asked, and they said they would take.
We can take them at the household chemical. There's, you know, I can, I can show you what the costs are. It's actually $4 for the Coleman, $7 for the 20-pound per unit. And if the, you know, the board wants us to do that, it's a very simple thing to do. The contractor's already doing it. The only, of the 10 cities and counties, the city of Hampton is currently the only one that has authorized it. But it's a very simple thing. Just say, we want to take propane, and we'll do it.
And is that Saturday?
Yes, this Saturday. From eight to four. I was in the, we had, we did have an issue, we were talking about a compactor. We had an issue with the, the transfer, the one right up at, up by the high school. We were having a problem with the compactor there. But it's been replaced, and three, three months ago, I was inside of it replacing the cylinder that was in there while we were waiting. I, I still dabble in a lot of different things here, so we're trying to keep our costs as low as possible.
How did you make this work a lot?
We're, according to the paperwork, it's 47% complete, but the walls are up, they're, I, we're expecting end of August, beginning of September for completion of that. We're really excited about it. And I can tell you, staff, the, the maintenance guys, actually working inside for a change is, you know, they're, they're pretty excited about that. Thank you all very much.
Thanks.
Next gentleman, Attorney General for B, updating County Utilities, Facilities, and Building Inspection Departments, Steve Hudson, Director of Operations.
Thank you. So these three departments, I'm going to be updating you on just all of our recent activities and some of the decisions that we have looking forward. Starting with facilities, I want to be highlighting really our, the improvements the Facilities Department has been making to county facilities. So not so much repairs, it's above and beyond repairs and maintenance. These are improvements, projects, things that instead of paying a vendor or contractor, you're doing it in-house, and we're saving a lot of money by doing that. First, I would like to talk about rec park improvements, especially the basketball court. We did pay a contractor to put down the concrete pad, but everything since then has been tackled by our Facilities Department. They've done surfacing, put in new lights, they installed the goalposts. If you look at these pictures, you'll see that there's three different colors on the concrete. That's not paint coloring decision. It's a multi-step, multi-layered, labor-intensive project, and the fact that these guys have tackled it is saving us a lot of money. Initial estimate from Tennis Courts Incorporated was $20,000, and I think that was low for what it would have been in the end. We're doing it for about half that. Further improvements in the park, they built these, these new steps, they improved on this walking bridge, they put in the dog park, nice level grassy field. Didn't always have nice level grassiness. It's, we are waiting on the equipment to be installed, but we're installing that ourselves as well. And also, we've added some security cameras to both there and the dumpster building across the street here. We went to the 360 complex build-out. So this is the King William Pharmacy. They moved out in March, and they didn't leave it in pristine condition. The guys got in there, they cleaned it up, took out a lot of containers full of trash. They also scrapped 12,000 pounds of metal. Got a little bit of money back for that. We found out that the DSS is not a great fit for this building at this time. We did put it out to bid for architectural services, but the initial just ballpark estimates was going to be far above what our budget was for this. We were hoping to not spend any more money than what would be reimbursed by the state for social service services. It was going to be well over that. So we're looking at temporary use by parts in the rec. Parts in the rec needs more space due to COVID. They're trying to continue all of their programs, but they can't pack so many people into one spot that they're used to. So they're trying to utilize as many sites and places as we can. Some items to address, no matter who moves in. Some items to address, no matter who moves into this building, is the septic system needs to be redone and the roof needs to be redone. A few other small projects here in this complex and over at the courthouse. Installed some network cabling, built this podium.
I built a new.
Put in Plexiglas screens for the Treasurer and Commissioner of the Revenue, COVID response. That brings up a point, the janitorial staff has actually really had to step up, and the whole county has with keeping their own spaces clean, but we've had to do a lot of work in coordinating more materials, more sanitizing equipment. I think they've done a good job. I bring up Motorola, not to get into the whole cell tower project, but just to say that Facilities Department is, we're coordinating with them to at least put in an equipment pad over at the Sheriff's Department that they're going to need, but we'll do that instead of having to pay them to do it. Utilities, so the system is expanding. Both Central Crossing and McCully Park are opening up new sections. Kennington, in fact, just opened up as well. Central Crossing has just about finished their utilities installation. McCully Park is just about to begin their water distribution installation. And throughout that, our Utilities Department is, has to work diligently with the contractors. They do pre-construction meetings, they are onsite for site inspections, they do flow tests, water quality afterwards. So it's a lot of work. Central Crossing is actually twenty new lots, twenty-one new lots, McCully is sixty new homes. It's adding a fair amount to the system. Master Utility Plan. I don't want to dig in too deeply into this. I've already presented some of this material to the Planning Commission, but it is still in draft form. What I want to bring to your attention is the proposed service area. So this is the proposed map, and this white is the proposed service area. This is what we've got right now in the 2010 Master Utility Plan is our proposed service area. They're very similar, both going down three sixty around the central garage area. The new proposal includes a bit more in this area, which is Industrial Park and next to Dunleavy's, which is right there. With that plan, oh, yes.
So in the next ten years, we're expecting eighteen hundred new homes?
That is what the developers say their plan is. That doesn't mean that that many is going to be built. They own the land, and that is their timeline.
Well, it looks like, I mean, if I'm reading that correctly, what we currently have, it's more than thirteen hundred home entries with a total of eighteen hundred connections.
Correct, correct.
Well, these, when they're speaking of these homes, are they, are they projects that are already approved?
Most of them are approved projects. They have to do with developments that are owned. A lot of them were approved pre-economic downturn in two thousand nine, well before that.
Probably more than that, right?
And this is actually, so Ron, Director of Community Development, did legwork in talking to developers, getting their kind of timelines and what they were proposing as that generating that number. The earlier master plan from 2010 did it by per acre usage, and they were anticipating two point eight million gallons per day, which is well over what our projected use is going to be. They were, they were, yeah, exactly. It was, it's, it was all over it that we needed more sources of water, we needed a lot more facility infrastructure. With this, with our new projections, biggest infrastructure need that we're going to have are two new storage tanks, three hundred gallon tanks, which are advised to be in, one in the ALIP area, one in the Main Wind area. Kind of in conjunction with this, the industrial park system, we had a consultant do an evaluation on, and it is currently operating above the permitted capacity by the Health Department, which means that we need a new withdrawal permit. This comes from the DEQ, with a volume of this amount. And if you get a DEQ groundwater withdrawal permit, then your well needs to meet DEQ standards, and the one at the site does not. Options are to drill a new well, or an alternative is to actually tie this into the central garage system, analyzing what is the best cost for what we anticipate growth for the system to be. Building inspections, I just want to take a look at numbers of permits and inspections, especially compared to years past, but also how COVID has affected us or not affected us. The red is last year, the blue is this year, gray and yellow five and six years ago. So blue this year, we are still maintaining or exceeding recent levels of permits issue. That's everything. That's electrical generators, everything. And as far as inspections performed, we never closed our doors, we never stopped doing inspections, helps that we're outside a lot. Contractors were very happy about that. And even in March, we had over four hundred inspections, which is a lot. Our staff, at most, we have two people in the field, which is exceptional work for that amount of people. We are looking to backfill a position because it's also unsustainable.
You tried to reach his retirement, correct?
Yes, that's correct. So John Bowles, our building official, did retire. We have not backfilled his position yet. I'm qualified as a building official, so I will hold that in the interim. Certificates of occupancy continue to go up. Blue this year, we've got, had sixteen occupancy permits or certificates issued just last month. There was a big drop in new home permits issued last month, but I propose that is not because of the lack of construction or slowdown, because all these plans have been submitted. As of last week, we still had twenty-one new plans on the desk in the Building Department that have already been approved by the Building Department. We are waiting on approval by other regulatory agencies, which have slowed down, E-DOT. But they are all coming down the pipe. Just a quick rundown of some of the recent projects, the bigger projects in the county. King William Avenue is a picture of them pouring the slab there last week. Solar Farm at Hampton Homes is broken ground. They're currently doing trench work. Storage units on three sixty are being framed. Colosseum Brevry Church has recently completed their additions and renovations. Like I said, Kennington and Central Crossing are just starting to open up and build new homes. Any questions?
Just one of the storage units, I noticed that they had next to it, between Kennington and the storage unit was all taken up. But then there's something sort of back on the other side. Is that still part of the soul, part of the storage place also? One in ALIP, the mini-stores is right there between where the entrance to Kennington is. It used to be all the woods, and they had a nice wood, and then they got, they got leveled, and then they built a storage unit right up to the back of the townhomes. And then the existing ones next to it, but then on the other side, going toward Richmond, they cleared another big lot, and way back, it looks like another storage facility. Is that all part of the same thing?
Store more, is it adding on? And ALIP storage, so they're two different facilities.
Oh, I was wondering, because it looked similar. I think it was so far back.
Big business right there. There's the guys in here, and I was going to say the stuff that they're so, they got to put it somewhere.
I didn't want the storage unit.
There's a lot that's being cleared right there, probably maybe one mile above that. There's a beginning of plants.
Oh, next to the, the little truck thing that next to the, your eyes should collapse.
Yeah, exactly.
Right next to, uh.
The trucks.
Yeah, yeah.
I have to look.
Clearing it and burning the piles, but I haven't seen any construction.
I haven't seen anything.
I know it was, we saw it, we had a big sign, uh, probably a good escalation.
No, you guys are doing impressive amount of work, especially given the circumstances. So thanks to you and thanks to them, please pass along the board's appreciation.
Sure, I will. Thank you.
Next, I have the Attorney General's Board B, update on fire and emergency medical services and Chief Lauren Nambly.
I'm really happy to have you on, too.
Really, I'd like to not drive.
Yeah, that's right. I know which screen to look at. Okay, so you all have my stacking update and all the updates that we've come through. We have a brief full-time firefighter position still available. I have not marketed that very hard because of what was going on with COVID. We don't want to close down part of the buildings and then be bringing in people to be there. So we had to set that aside. We had to talk about that a little bit, how we were going to market and really seeing if they could position to go. We did lose one of our full-time firefighters who left Carolina to come to us and going back to Carolina, going back to Carolina because they increased the offer and the pay to him. Can't believe it, that he is staying on full-time, however. We had a firefighter start last week, who is full-time. I think he's going to be a great addition to our group. He has home military and his repatriations in the military and has all the certifications. I'm really excited to be a part of the county group. As you saw, this evening, the new ambulance is here. I hope to have it in service by this weekend. We are waiting on, we are waiting on the, the last items to come in. And again, because of COVID, a lot of the medical equipment is behind and the shipping is behind, so therefore, we've got to just wait until then we can get it on the road. We talked about it, we had two point for the third new unit, but we all want to start stripping two different units, and now we don't have one complete unit. So hopefully, we just get everything in and get it up and running and on the road. Engine one is going to go out at ABS. It's going to be gone at least a month, it could be longer. That has a lot of issues that have to be fixed and replaced for two reasons. One, that there was never PMI done on it, so it was never put under maintenance. And then the second reason is a lot of times maintenance that was done on it was done in-house. And so there are a lot of electrical issues and things that are not running to the right places. We need to get it out, we need to set up and figure out what's going on, because otherwise, we're not going to have it. We're going to rent one from ABS. We did contact everyone around this, see if they have anything we can use, and they do not, because everybody's running with their rental also. The good news is, if we get this truck fixed and it's running well, then it will be, if we do get the AFT grant, a second engine that we will have, that we can use in case something goes down. Broadband has come back and is now installed at the firehouse. Good news to that is that also feeds into the engine. One of the reasons we had to send the engine down to ABS is to do its computer gen updates, because we didn't have the service to do that with them here. That is one less trip the engine will have to take when it comes back and we can have to do that in-house. They will send someone to us to do that. If it doesn't automatically do it, then it's part of our service contract. Phase two, when it began, we decided we, at that point, we would decide what we were going to do with the firehouse and the ambulance and letting people back into it. That did start Friday, and the new time person writes us back to use that building to do some childcare in, which we are going to work with them to do that. And we're just going to slowly introduce, bring the people back into the firehouse. We're just going to kind of play it by year, go by what the governor says and so forth, just to keep our providers safe. We do not have enough providers that we can risk putting them into areas and bringing public in if we do not need to. All of our PPE is good. All of our personnel have been instructed, no matter what, if they are wearing something that says King William on them and identify that one, they're telling you they are to be masked when they are out in public. We're beginning the de-mobilization stage of COVID nineteen, which means we're actually going to put a plan together of how we're going to come out of this. So therefore, we have to go back into this in the fall. We can build up the plan. The other thing, too, that don't, I don't see a lot, I think a lot of things are going to come out of this for firing EMS, it'll change how we do our day-to-day operations and how we wear PPE and what we do. So although we will be de-mobilizing some of that, I think some of our masking and our PPE are going to become day-to-day parts of what we do when we are resigned to our public. Sure.
And did that just start in, as a phase two started, I know I've seen the fire engine out many times, that all of our plays, the pennies, the Mexican plays, none of them had masks on, so does that just start?
It should, it started with the governor saying we needed them on. So what, you know, what they were like. Yeah, so prior to that, absolutely, they did not have masks on. As soon as the governor said that we have to wear them, I sent something out, and please, do you see them without that? But we know, absolutely. Because we want to, you know, we want to make sure the worst days you're leaving our public there.
Right, because that should probably, that they don't do it, that they do.
Well, that's still very, I thought it was strange, I probably should have called them back.
So it's a rule.
That's okay. And that's why I put it in here, because they should, they should be in that. We need to protect our public at all times, because nine more weeks.
That's what I thought, though. If they didn't use them as like, to remind anybody else.
Exactly.
Thank you.
We are in the midst of doing all of our fit testing for N ninety-five masks and for FDBA. That is our full-time firefighters, with the exception of one, have all been done. Getting our other firefighters, because they are part-time in around their other schedules, which is more difficult. ACI is absolutely amazing and has come out several times to work with us, is not charging us every single time he comes out, because he's going to do a couple of trees in the area. So that has been very nice. New hose in Knoxville, we're going to go home and order that. We put in for a grant through Firehouse stuff, that was declined. We are using fifteen to twenty-year-old hose right now that is barbed from Mango Hit. It is dangerous, so we have to replace that. Good news is, is we, I kind of took our budget this year and used it very, very sparingly and took here any issues or overdue balances that were out there, didn't really spend a lot. Now we're in that last month, and I have money where we can go buy some of these big ticket items, and it's not going to put us over budget. The other thing that we're going to do, also apply for a grant for, was the extrication equipment needs to be converted into battery-powered, which will make it much easier to use and make it last much longer. If we had to go and buy all new extrication equipment, it would cost us about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For sixteen thousand dollars, ASC can come in and transfer it all over and get us into Valerie Pack, service it, and do what we need to do. That's equipment we use a lot out in this area because of car accidents that we run. We are going to be doing that with our four-for-life money, so that will be grant money that we take a little bit from this year and a little bit of next year, and it'll come in and take equipment to replace what we need and put it back. Any questions on any of that?
Uh, gentlemen. I asked for a twice-type-two jury meeting. Would you like to get an update on volunteers' equipment, training utilization?
Sure.
Everything's all over the stand.
A little bit of an update that I can give you right at this moment for them is, we have had very little volunteer participation, and it is because of the COVID. I think that's, when that happened, people had to stay home, people wanted to stay home, they're home with their kids. So some of our volunteers that were coming up and running more regularly, we have not. We've had very slow amounts of applications come in and so forth, but I can have absolute numbers and all of that come through. Do you want me to reach out to the, to Station Two also?
Could you please?
Okay. Because I don't get any of their stuff, so if you'd like your number by the max, then to get that to your server.
The AFT grant that we, we are waiting on, first of all?
Yes.
How long has that been suspended?
So, grants in the age of COVID. We should have heard in that, we should have heard the answer for that in July. I honestly do not get where we are going to have the answer for that. Literally, in Grantland, everything has stopped in fire emergency services, because everybody who knows does stuff has been told to do other things. So all of our grants and our overall works we usually hear from by now, we're not getting the answers on them. As I find that out and get updates, I can absolutely let you know. I was asked to be a subject matter expert for VDM for one of their grant processes that should have been done in, at least March, but end of February, beginning of March. We are just starting to be doing a little grant spec week. So everything's.
Probably working at home and the things laying on their desk.
And I was going to say, we're not doing it in person, we're doing it through Zoom. So where normally the AFT is awarded, we will know, and we know what to do. And that does for us a lot, because as far as budgeting and what we want to do with the incoming trucks and so forth, we need those answers before we can start looking at how we're going to grow and what we're going to do.
And congratulations on your selection. To the subject matter, I guess.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
He gets a bunch of more work.
Yeah, it is more work, but he is also very good for King William to have a seat out here. You know, we're there to represent our county, and that, that does a lot as a department that is nearly growing. that is being grown and has a seat.
What are we doing on the resupply for the tank? Remember, we were having trouble with the unit that was refilling your air tank?
The air tank. It has been completely filled. ASC, who I was talking to, it's the ACI, so they're still on. They actually have taken care of all of it. They come out, they service it. We wrap that into one of our other service agreements. So it is filling now. Let me say, this is not an impressive unit. It does take time to fill, but it is usable. So we can have bottles filled within 15 minutes, each bottle, which if we had a huge cascade system, it would run much, much faster. But we also don't have a staff that needs to support that. So between what we have and the need to refill our bottles and we're doing training and so forth, we're very sufficient there at Firehouse. And then if we do happen to have a large incident, Wapertown and Mango Hit always step up and they can turn to us.
Thanks a lot. The ambulance is good. Show you some of the topple upgrades we got.
Yeah, but it was, I'm glad it's here. That box is checked and now if something breaks down, I have something to worry. So that makes me happy. Thank you, gentlemen.
You probably guessed, but I haven't.
You got me. That's really.
So I have on the agenda, it's four days of regular provisions to the King William County Preparation Manual. This is Julie Mills, just a sketch.
Good evening. I've recently finished a stake course to be certified as a Virginia Department of State Officer. And with that new title, I was tasked with reviewing and updating our purchasing policies. Like to go over some of the suggestions that we have by the state bookie multiple. The first update would be to remove the requirement to advertise public's notice in newspapers for the bids. We suggest we take that as a requirement and believe it as an option. We may still advertise the newspapers for solicitations but feel we could benefit, that could benefit from printing. However, most solicitations will get the coverage we need on the county website, Eva. Eva's a stake with terms like there's thousands of vendors that have already gone through a vetting process. They sign up to get solicitation certificates to them that fit that fair scope. Just like in requests is to increase the threshold in which we require purchase order from 1,000 to 5,000. There are many POs that we process on a day-to-day basis that are over 1,000, but they're day-to-day things the department needs. And requiring the department to request a PO for these amounts and not only add additional paperwork for them, but unnecessary time to process. In the last six months, some examples of things we've gotten between 1,000 and 5,000 range, retire for vehicles, ammunition for the sheriff's office, balance for the registrar's office, software maintenance fees, tenders and repairs for vehicles. These are purchases that we feel that the department heads should be able to make without additional needs of approval. If the board agrees to increase the PO threshold to 5,000, we would also like to ask that we change the requirement for documentation of all the others as well. The first change would be that the purchases in excess of 1,000 to 3,000 be changed to 1,000 to 5,000. We would still expect the department to make all effort to find the best deal for the county. They would just be in charge of their documentation and maintaining it for all the purchases. For purchases in excess of 3,000 to 10,000, we request that it be changed to 5,000 to 30,000. 5,000 given to you at the point in which we would require a purchase order. And for 5,000 and 30,000, we would require at least three quotes from potential vendors showing that all effort had been made to find the best product at the best price. For purchases in excess of 10,000 to 60, we request that it be changed to 30,000 to 100,000. At this threshold, we would require four quotes for potential vendors. We would also like to add the verbiage to reiterate that purchase order request be submitted and approved prior to meeting this. We would also like to suggest we remove certain language regarding construction procurement based on the Virginia Public Performance Act. And our current policy of the state of construction may be secured under a collaborative contract. However, state code says that construction may only be reserved by a formal solicitation. The last item that we would like the board to consider is increasing the threshold in which we have to cut down on returning review solicitations. Our current requirement is at 25,000. We would like to request that be increased to 100,000 since that's our responsibility to move formal solicitation. We would still leave the requirement for any contracts above $25,000 would need to be reviewed by the county attorney of fire itself. We are working on putting together general terms and conditions to attach to all solicitations under 100,000 that the county attorney will approve prior to the end of the year. By the end, we'd like to thank the board for their consideration of these updates that will help us be, help us to align the state codes of all.
Does the state allow the other counties? Do you have any research saying that? Are we getting to more like what other counties are? Or are we alone?
Yes, sir. I reached out to most of the counties that's around us. They have anywhere for at least a PO part, which means 3,000 and 5,000 are their thresholds. Most around us don't send any solicitations to county attorneys. That was just my.
I have a whole list of questions.
Oh, that's right.
You're in this.
Want to know the answer to the web-based solicitation. The line of management policy is master. Is that on purpose? Holdover? It's all huge, Kevin?
And we just took what was already there and tried to adjust it to get to where we needed it to be without a huge overhaul.
And then this has had this many questions. Do we look at some balances on the, especially with such a radical increase from up to $100,000? That's substantial. Is, are there adequate checks and balances in place that, that are assured that things are not, they're checked?
Well, the 100,000 is for the county attorney's review. What we have found with requesting the 25,000 up to 100,000 is that the county attorney currently requests the RFP. They go through it, even though it's already been reviewed and published and awarded. They go through the contract. So our attorney spends a lot of time on stuff that has already been completed. All of our contract templates, our RFP templates were created by our previous county attorney, Mr. Stuck. The area that I felt that board might have more concern about is going from $1,000 to 5,000 for procurement. And what I have found, and Julie can speak to this, is that over the last four and a half years, we have such tight budgets in all of our departments that department heads, they seek the lowest and the best price, whether it's $50 or it's $2,500. And then of course, Julie is always there for assistance on any kind of computer questions. And that, she reaches out and does a lot of computer for certain departments that are unsure on how to do things.
I have one quick correction on the 25,000. It looks like these, you want to be, $20,000 by the way, depending on the, that's, that's something I'm checking out. And my last comment, when is it determination made and is it properly communicated with the solicitation that currently is in the lower price or less than? Do you leave that up to the, or do you state that in the solicitation? That makes a big difference of what we've got on both sides of the case.
So if each of our solicitations have in there that the county will make that determination to the best of their ability. And we leave it up to our subject matter experts, who are usually our end user, to decide if that's the best deal for them.
And you don't have any protests?
I have not had any yet.
You perhaps take a best value that's in the best interest of the county and then you protest for members of, all the different parties. Do you have any?
It hasn't happened yet.
It's, it's not always the lowest bid. It's private.
If it's a request or proposal, it doesn't have to be the lowest bid. And every time that we've done since I've been here, we have gone with the lowest bid because it's worked for us and they've been able to get the best product. So it hasn't really been a bid yet. But it does state in each of our, our RFPs that it would be our determination to decide what are the best factors.
You say it's not.
And that can be something that I can ask in our general terms and conditions that we're coming up with. Maybe we add something in there. I can talk with the attorney without that at all. Okay. I can look it up.
So I guess mine, the question is a little bit more broad. I can, I can understand, again, the county attorney review portion of it. I mean, we have a talks, you know, I'm building about legal fees as pertains to the new contract and the smaller purchasing portion of it. But the, the other numbers here, is there a real case for, are we really losing efficiency under the process that's in place that really warrants the change being paid? Do we run into this all the time? Or are we paying as much as we should? Whoever wants to answer that question, yeah.
Is it for the contract that you're talking about, 100,000, or are you talking about 5,000?
I'm talking more specifically about, again, purchases in excess of, you know, raising the 10 to 60 to 30 to 100, and even the 3,000 to 10,000, 5,000 to 30,000.
Those are thresholds that I got from studying the different counties around us and trying to come up with a medium of where everybody is. Some are higher. The state only says that their small purchases are under 100,000. So under 100,000, locality growth, it's up to them to come up with that information on their own. You can reach out to other counties like I did. I don't know that for bigger dollars, it's a huge thing for like the 20 to 30s and stuff. The biggest is, I think for us, our PO request at 1,000. We get a lot of extra time added in because there's a lot that are 1,500 to 2,000 that are, like I said, returners for the plot machine or ballots for the new election that's coming up. And there's money that they have to spend, but they have to stop before they buy it because we have to approve it before they vote.
Now, I was just curious if there's a real world case that we're encountering for it, or if we're just trying to mirror other counties. But if the answer is that yes, we are actually running into this and it's causing inefficiencies with the work, that's, that's the answer that I was hoping.
So this will tax, tax the, like, process, kind of get a little bit easier.
Yes, sir.
So we have on the agenda for E, recommended financial policies for the county that's a gentleman, she's not here, she's not feeling well, so we want to probably table over you and speak to that position. That's the name.
Yes, sir. I, LaFasha is not well, so she is not here tonight. And I don't feel like I can speak to this agenda item as eloquently as she can because she's the one that's put all the work into it. So I'd like to request that the board consider, hey, read that and let her bring it back to you to the line.
Move to table. So.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Scousy?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Next item we have on the agenda for F, bond series 202, 2002A and 2002B escrow arena related to the fees against of the general obligation school bonds, that's actually million, very complex services, again, table maybe.
Gentlemen, what you have in front of you is a request to clean up a error that occurred with the payoff of the 2002 series bonds. Both the 2002A and the 2002B series bonds were King William County Public School bonds. And if you remember back in 2018, I came to the board and requested that you support us in either deceasing your escrow account or paying off long-term debt that would put us in a better position because we knew at that point that we were going to be doing the renovation project at Hamilton Homes. Hamilton Homes, of course, as you're aware, increased our annual debt service by the tune of about $850,000. So in 2018, the board approved us deceasing the 2002A bond series. And what that means is that by deceasing it and putting it into escrow, it took it off of our books. It's being managed by a separate financial institution. And over the next three, four years, it was going to be paid off. And then any interest earned on the money sitting in escrow that was left over at the end would be returned back to us. Also, in the 2019 fiscal year, I requested that we again attempt to pay off the 2002B bond series. The board was supportive of that. We had requested a reimbursement for pre-expenses for the Hamilton Homes. So the county requested that as part of the bond proceeds, we received $907,000. The balance the board had approved that we were going to utilize out of the revenue collected. And we were going to decease that to escrow account just like we did with 2002A. What happened, though, was that in April of 2019, BPSA, who is the manager of these long-term debts, contacted us and said, oh, here's an opportunity. You can refinance it. And my comment was, we don't want to refinance it. Can we pay it off? That was kind of a new one. We've been throwing a new, quite a few new ones at the BPSA over the last two or three years. We worked with them. They said, yes, you can. And so they told us the amount that we would need to wire. The board agreed and we wired the funds to pay off 2002B. July 2019, we were notified that our escrow was short. And of course, we're pretty, not a bit. It cannot be short. So we worked with BPSA and we worked with Compliment and Dole's and we worked with Davenport, who's our financial agent, to try to figure out why they were saying that we were short about $128,000. And because we really couldn't get a clear answer, we went ahead and made an additional payment of, I think, $20,000 or $30,000. And we're continuing to work with these three entities to try to come up with what's going on. Why, why do you say that we owe anything? Well, finally got a clarification on that BPSA sold the 2002 bond series. There was an A and there was an B. Well, we had two separate long-term debts, 2002A and 2002B. Escrow one, we paid off the other. But when BPSA got the funds, they paid off the escrow, which then left the 2002B to be escrow short because it had a little bit higher balance. And so if you look at my memo under the action of question, it explains it in a little bit probably clearer language than I am. But what happened is that BPSA perceived the 2002 bond as that. The county, because we had a 2002A and a 2002B and worked with BPSA, the error occurred on their part. And I do want you to understand that. County staff did everything correctly. We transferred the money, we worked with the treasurer, we worked with BPSA, we worked with Davenport. And so we now need to clean up. So the 2002A is paid off, not escrow. The 2002B, which was paid off, is now escrow. And so what you have in front of you is a resolution that I will bring back to you on the 22nd. It's also an escrow agreement for the 2002B. And then at the end of the fiscal year, when we reconcile the split levy, the 96,000, 97,000, sorry, that's going to be needed to fulfill the full escrow balance will come from the split levy reconciliation, since it is a school bond. So I apologize for how confusing this is because it's took us a few months to scratch our heads and figure out what had happened and how can you wire funds six months apart and have something that escrow is paid off and then something that's supposed to be paid off turned into escrow? But it happened. So the good thing is... So the good thing is, both of them will be paid off in some form or fashion. They're off of our books. There's, by doing this, by paying off the two thousand and two A and B, it saved county about eight hundred, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand in debt service gain, will it? Which is what we were trying to do to position ourselves better, to take on the Hamilton Homes debt and also to take on, you know, debt at the county, so that we can go through three of those. So with that, if you want, I will help and ask questions.
Comment, color, leave word, deceisons? Does this place another burden on, on the school system to come up with twenty-seven thousand dollars? Is this additional or do they kind of help?
No, that's what we will do is when we do the reconciliation for the split levy at the end of the year. And we usually have collected additional revenue that was accounted for, you know, in the numbers. I think this past year we had four hundred something thousand. So the ninety-seven then will be pulled out of that and then the balance will be available to the schools with the board's approval.
Are the schools aware of this?
No, they are not. They are not even aware that we did the deceisons on their behalf.
I imagine they're going to become aware when we've done that reconciliation, ninety-seven thousand dollars. So we might want to just give them a heads up of what's going on. Because, yeah, I can, I already read the text messages coming from the county on this one, so.
Well, the thing is, is that we cannot utilize county funds to.
Oh, fully, fully aware of that and that's, and it's fine, I get it. But what they're, what they're going through, I don't know that they're going to get it without thorough inclination. So it's just me.
And you're.
Primarily communicate.
Right, right. I'll make sure that they're aware and that this will come from whatever balance, the new balance from the split levy. Yeah, sir.
And like I said, there's banks or whatever, institutions, but error, why aren't they obligated to correct it?
We have gone around that many times and.
Oh, yeah, that's.
They say it was a miscommunication, but.
That would somebody even kind of do function, but there.
Board G proposed amendment to the Kingley and Co. Chapter twenty-six, Courts, Section twenty-six, statute thirty-two. Court calls for funding of courthouse and courtroom security personnel, as Bobby Castner and County Minister.
Gentlemen, the criminal courts brought this to my attention and Sheriff Walton had, I think, talked about this previously at a meeting. The twenty-twenty General Assembly session made an adjustment to the sum that can be assessed for costs associated with criminal and traffic cases in the district. And what you have in front of you is a memo outlining the history of it. The board approved a five dollar charge in June of two thousand and two. Once the General Assembly had acted, the General Assembly acted again in two thousand and seven and raised it from five dollars to ten dollars. And now the twenty-twenty General Assembly has raised it from ten to twenty. I ran this past the sheriff. These funds are revenues that are brought in to help offset the cost of courtroom security. So the services that are provided, this will not add it when we cover the full cost that the sheriff's department puts out. But it does help offset it. I did speak with the sheriff and asked him if he was supportive of recommending the change from ten dollars to twenty dollars. He is. And so therefore, I would like you to consider it, but you, for the second meeting, that you allow us to change the fee from a ten dollar fee to a twenty dollar fee in these specific cases.
One thought comes to mind, is it going to affect the ones who are pending cases now or?
That, I don't know. I believe that, you know, it's going to affect July first.
Yes.
Yes, July first. How much is this going to help with our recovery costs? Five day, fantastic recovery, or is this just a, a legislative rule we got while this is what they're like?
Well, you gotta remember that this, this fee is, is for the users, those first people who are coming into the courthouse and paying fines, these are costs that's added on to their fines. These are the persons that's using the court. Will it help offset the cost? Yeah, absolutely it will. I, I don't know what our numbers are right off the top of my head that we bring in a year on, on cost, but it's around fifty thousand dollars, give or take. So you're looking at doubling from ten dollars we're paying now, we're getting now to twenty dollars.
And that's our maximum benefit, I would assume.
Correct. It's, it's something that comes straight out of the General Assembly.
Next thing we have on agenda four H, cares for relief funds.
Gentlemen, what you have in front of you is what we discussed at the June, many, the last meeting. One of those meetings. I made you aware that our allocation for the curricular funds was just a little under one point five million. And that I had been speaking with the manager of the town west point and probably would be handling this because the allocation does include funding for the towns. So we've had some meetings, the town manager, the director of finance, HR manager of the town treasurer, trying to kind of come through and come up with a consensus, some parameters to work off of, to lay the groundwork. One of the things was that the, so the population data from the US Census Bureau was utilized to come up with the county's allocation. We decided to do the same for the town's population. So the town manager is in agreement, it's believe like nineteen point one percent of the overall funds, which is a total of two hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. Those funds would be transferred to the town. They had agreed, just like we had agreed, to set it separate bank account. That would be reconciled and reviewed by each entity so that we have, you know, crossing oversight to make sure that everything is above board. In addition to that, the town manager is working with their county attorney to draft a memo to the board supervisors stating that they will follow all of the guidelines submitted in the act and that because we will be transferring their share of the funds to a separate bank account, that they agree to hold the county on us. If the best come in after that and find that some of the expenditures that the town made were not eligible, the town has committed that they will not let the county responsible for that, that they will pay them out of their own funds and reimburse them. The other thing is, is that, of course, the West Point schools and Kingley County County schools are quite different. You know, in size and population needs. And so we made the decision that the town board and the council would be the ones that worked with their schools and that county administrator and guidance for the local supervisors would work with our schools. So, but there was no, you know, competing, basically, you know, what, because on the West Point, we don't have to be the third advice person. So I thought those were some pretty good negotiations that came out of it. Now, I know that the board had requested to have input and please don't think that what is here is it at all. These are just things that we have talked about, things that have been brought to my attention that I wanted to put out in front of you so that you could then make some recommendations to me. So they can use some of these or additional ones that you have. One of the things that is being discussed with the Mid Peninsula Planning District, it's called COVID Adaptation Program, or CAP. Basically, Mr. Lawrence has been talking to all of the regional participants. The localities, the counties, we put in a hundred thousand of the cares for relief money. Now, we put in thirty-three thousand, we could pay a very small amount for the program coordinator that can monitor and track everything. And they would do kind of a regional approach distributing the funds. And if all of the counties and towns committed, it would be seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. So that is one option that we can look at. And I've attached the draft of the CAP program guidelines and also a service agreement in here for your review. It is not compliant because it's constantly being tweaked, but I did have attorney Andrew McRoberts who reviewed the service agreement and CAP guidelines and, you know, in a way that there are changes at all. In fact, same venue, so I'll just represent to you that for this. The second thing that we found, because was West Point is doing the COVID out of monetary fund. And it's a brochure and a coupon book, fifty dollars, ten coupons for five dollars each. What they did is they reached out to the local businesses in the town to ask if they'd be interested in participating. So the brochure has a complete list of all the businesses that would take those vouchers. Then they publicized it to the citizens. The citizens had to come and sign for the voucher book. They had to show records that they actually lived in the town. And then at that point, they were free to go out and spend the funds.
And they're willing for a household.
Yes, for a household.
And a widow said she doesn't want it back.
But then what happens is that the citizen will go to a business and maybe they'll spend fifteen dollars out of the coupon book. The vendor will take it and then they will come to the town and proceed cash compensation. So it's basically providing the citizens of the town funds to spend at the local businesses. So both are benefiting. The town did this before we even looked at the care relief money. They did this, I would, I would assign General Department. But in looking at that, that's a pretty creative option. And so I wanted to lay that out. It's probably something that you might want to consider. It's a good way of getting money into the hands of the businesses and keeping it local.
There's one, one other option in that, what the citizens, when they can also sign it back over to the town and they will, to the good neighbors of it. And they will issue it just like that, so they're not getting cash. So they still are going to the businesses.
So this is something West Point has already done, correct?
Yes, they're issuing them right now.
Yeah, they got the time to do it.
And then let's see, the other area that, of course, you can look at is the local business court. And I feel, I think that we all realize that the cares relief money was pretty much geared towards that as a priority. And so I just listed out some of the things that are eligible. Food delivery to residents. I added a document that was sitting in your station when you got there. I was contacted by a guy, Agent, had the best league concerned with what they are doing and asking for support. So that's an option. You know, some of the things that we can do for the businesses is helping with their unemployment insurance costs, their training, purchasing this outdoor seating and tables and umbrellas. If they have to store certain furniture because of the space requirements. So all of these things are all that. Then, of course, we have the Economic Development Authority that has a plus three clause that they roll forward unused money from two thousand and nineteen, which the board approved. So they had been taken out and set that into a grant, three thousand dollar grant for impacted businesses within the county. Of course, you'd have to be compliant on all of your taxes and vehicles and everything else to be eligible. But that has been a great success. To date, I think they have distributed twenty-seven thousand dollars to the grants.
Yeah, I am with West Point also. They made sure all of the businesses were paid out for everything.
Yes, yes.
Did they use priority to native businesses that not received any, any money from, loans from the government or anything?
In other words, they did. I think that's probably confidential. I'm only guessing I don't think so. Yeah, I think they applied and they met all the guidelines. And if you see the vouchers as fifty bucks, you could go all fifty to one place or you could spread them out.
And then the next category for you to consider is, of course, the Kingley County Public Schools. They did submit a list of things that they would like to be funded. On some of the IT, I had requested our system engineer review and vet for me. And the schools are receiving some direct aid, cares for relief money.
And we know that.
West Point is forty-two thousand and Kingley is two hundred and two thousand. And the request of the county's care relief money is six hundred and forty-three thousand. The vendor does adjust the request, but at the same time, both the town manager and I agreed that prior to any county, the town cares relief money being distributed, we should be made aware of how they're expending directly because we have no control over that. Because we don't want to be any level dipping. We want to keep this as squeaky clean as possible.
So what they're requesting is over above what they already got, which was two hundred.
So their request was six hundred and forty-three thousand. We'll bet that. And, you know, how we'll handle it is any agency, organization, department that requests funding is going to have to come and present the justification. Some of this can be reimbursable, you know, because the expenses will have been made, so it'll be a little bit easier. But some of these things like, you know, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars for laptops for the teachers, that's going to bear a great deal of scrutiny. And then, of course, you know, Kingley County, you know, we are going to see some reimbursement for costs that we have incurred. We are going to see some reimbursement for the PPE's purchase, the extra cleaning supplies. And one of the things to keep in mind is that the guidelines state if you had a budgeted, don't sue reimbursement. So just because, say, we spent ten thousand dollars on cleaning supplies, it has to be COVID related. It can't be things that we don't follow already. So, you know, we are trying to be extremely black and white on a lot of this. So we have a lot of people's hands looking at this, betting at first. Of course, there was the administrative lead that was issued for some deal that had been exposed, but actually did not turn up positive. We didn't get any purchase of the bat. We are going through a process with the system engineer on who truly is eligible to remote work, what are their capabilities for working from home? Do they have the ability, do they have the internet access, you know, consistency? Those we provide laptops for in anticipation of having to be remote work in the future. But those that cannot justify it will not be receiving a laptop, which is that simple. We'll also be talking to animal shelter social services, fire and EMS, the volunteer fire and EMS departments, parks and rec, and any other organization that may have incurred or may need some assistance. And there again, that agent, the information on the policy is on the wheels that they are providing. Thirty-one Kingley residents. So with all that said, and taking out the part that the town of West Point would receive and if the board wanted to participate in the CAP program that the peninsula is putting on, that would lead the county with a little over one point one million dollars in social relief funds. So with all of this, I know it's a lot to take in. I will definitely take in comments, recommendations to them now. We can put this also on the agenda for the second, if you want to do a, a thought tour, talk to constituents. And we'll be finding out more information as well in the interim, talking to the schools, talking with other entities. So I'm open for suggestions or recommendations.
Do you have a notion of would not make the decision as of one August? Or was it, we have to tell the end of the year to make the decision, or do you have a notion of all, as soon as you want to make the decision?
Honestly, I would like to have the priorities from the board so that we can. Honestly, I would like to have the priorities from the board so that we can at least fill those in no later than the twenty-second because we are really going to have to get out there, especially for the local businesses and educate them and fight other things on, work with the schools, work with the assistant engineer on vetting all of the IT, talking with the volunteer organizations, and there's going to be a lot of work. So I would love to be able to start, you know, distributing some of the funds and, you know, even the EDA. The EDA can come back and request the twenty-seven thousand that's been granted to be reimbursed through the kinders and then determine how you're distributing to them. So, I mean, there's a lot of avenues of use for this funding. Our goal though is just to make sure that what we expended on is as transparent and justified as possible. And, you know, I think I made it very clear that if we don't spend all of this because there's no need, I'm fine with that. I would prefer that we be one of the commissioners that does it right. And, you know, no questions because we were on a conference call the other day and some of the things that counties were asking if they could use the money for, I was suspended. Can I buy a building? Can I defund my sheriff's office fifty percent and then have to use the cares funds to refund that? I mean, I saw this with Aura and that's why I get a little twitchy, I guess, because so many people, you know, continue to walk in like right now and all it's going to do is go across one of them and write a check.
But the good news is with all of that wild ideas and non compliance, they will have a very hard time on the answer.
Dean, twenty-seven thousand dollars reimbursement to the EDA, we can choose to give them more for this than what I'm checking.
I guess what I'd like to see, if I could maybe kind of steer the conversation in one direction, I'd like to see maybe a notional idea of what, of model, our version of the West Point hope and cost so that we, you know, know how much of that, if we wanted to go there, how much of that is needed up. Obviously, continue to scrutinize the schools' requests and any other requests that comes in like this. Steven, you pass a lot, I failed to honestly, the community services board request that went to just you and I, I think. I replied the best you know, like I've got to this. Steven and I got an email last week, I think, at some point in time from an employee that lives in the county, from the Northern Mass Mid Peninsula Community Services Board, that they had a request as well. So I'll send that along to you. I can't remember what the amount was. It wasn't staggering, but it was still in the tens of thousands of dollars that they were going for.
Social services, have they requested anything?
They have not, but I did make, and just like I did with Dr. White, aware that we will be bringing them, but I wanted to have this conversation first. They'll be kind of our subject matter experts and finance department has sent out a form requesting information on either incurred cost to this point or future cost or future recommendations. So those should be coming back in and I should have all of those compiled and vetted through my calendar twenty-second as well.
Just one other thing to follow. If we decide to commit that hundred thousand dollars to the Mid Peninsula, will they be responsible for that hundred thousand dollars if Aura has committed or will they be good enough to sign something like West Point did, if they would be totally responsible for any errors?
I don't know, we can ask, I'll tell you that the PDC is principally funded by grants. If there's anything the PDC is good at, it is compliance of grant condition. They are very good at that. So I had every confidence in their ability to do it, but I mean, all we can do is put the question to Louis, would you, would you leave some type of whole harmless?
Yeah, with that being said, if everybody's here, we just heard it tonight.
Oh, I had it.
The only thing with them, I'm not sure they have pockets, they do that, but, you know, they've also committed to complete transparency and reports to all of the participants' boards, if you like. I mean, the grant experience, I'm really not that concerned, but they know it's extremely exciting that somebody will take a regional approach.
Are they, all the counties mentioned, did we get a force conference with them there?
They are participating. Yes, and the town is willing to participate as well to the two hundred and thirty-three thousand.
And that mirrors the PDC membership fee structure as well. Urbana and West Point are, and have smaller towns, smaller pockets of the membership fee that is lower than the county's by about a third just due to the population. Yeah, I don't have an issue with that for a portion of it. I think one other item there that Ed and I both saw was there's potential in here to use this for broadband. I'm not sure what we could use it on in a timeframe that's given.
I think that's to clarify by the power of connect group that it cannot.
It cannot be.
Only if it is telemedicine, telemedicine.
Education.
The guidelines in the initial documents, there's something about remote learning as well, but again, I just, I don't know how on earth we would, the more thought about it, what projects are even out there.
As you read into the school, I think you could easily justify it, increase access to more hotspots, et cetera. But as far as.
Was the laptop.
The laptop is covered with all.
Oh, sure. Again, I would have a hard time even coming up with something that we could, but it's something to have on the radar if there's not.
Another vendor, the electricity, the expensive cage wiring, I don't know. Travis, we haven't talked about it, but why are we giving a hundred and ninety thousand so that the PDC can do what we can do better in the town itself? Are we going to get a hundred and ninety thousand back?
Questions for Louis and exactly what, because what he's got in here is not super detailed. But, you know, well, guaranteed he'll call in that he's got forty-five minutes for it.
This doesn't make sense. Why can't they have the world, the universe, what they're talking about? It seems a little wrong.
Well, let's call him and ask him. I'm sure Louis has got some specific things in mind already that, you know, he would be dealing with, otherwise he wouldn't be asking for it on the bank, so.
It's fantastic opportunity, the organizations love you, five months. I'm not sure it's the best bet, giving them that much money to do the same thing, bring it back in the King William, that we can do on our own.
Well, same with that. I'm, I'm, I have the conversation, maybe Louis can even get out here on the twenty-second. I don't think he's coming out, but I mean, you're commissioner, you got to accept that just like I did.
Traditionally, the money that we fund them a year, how does that come back to the county?
Louis can give you a breakdown of it. It depends on what the grant cycles are in a given year because again, we only fund them like twenty thousand dollars. Most PDCs, localities fund in hundreds of thousands of dollars and they're principally funded by membership fee. About ten years ago, when the worst of the recession, the PDC got together and the commissioner basically said, look, we cannot afford to be the principal funding agents of this organization. We're either going to pull way back or we're going to have to find a different way to do it. And what they did was they created a model where they ask for as minimal as possible from the member localities and they fund their operations off of state and federal grants. You know, they've got some that they roll over year after year to year for, and they do it based on service center needs, you know, we rank our service center needs every year. They identify grant opportunities, some new, some that are recurring, and that's how they fund the organization. Because the overall budget of the organization is nearly a million dollars every year and a small portion of that comparatively is funded from the pool of merit. So if we have a particular project that they fund and they do a lot of work on boards, we absolutely get that back. I know they provided some technical assistance on some planning matters. They provided some technical assistance on our emergency plan recently.
Maybe they're asking for this money for basically because of COVID, right?
Well, this is, looks to me like coming out of Louis' brain, economic development opportunity that the PDC feels like they're well positioned to, to address. So what he's provided, again, he probably never had a conversation with Mr. Lawrence and the PDC, he's expansive in his thinking, I can tell you that. So I'd like to get some more detail from him on this too.
Yeah, I just.
But at the same time, I am comfortable just based on the track record of the PDC with, you know, saying that it's probably a good idea, but Ed's right, we should vet it before we commit to it.
Yeah, I think so too. I mean, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, you know, we could, maybe it's, we have a need that we could have brought us here rather than put it in a big pot, you know.
Well, we need to look at what, you know, some potential things that we can do internally are going to cost and how much money we're going to have, you know, to do those things that complies with the rules that we've been given. And if there's, I mean, honestly, if all the needs are taken up by internal needs, then we need to focus on those internal needs. I would agree with that, okay?
Just a long explanation of farmer's market, pet breeding, a lot of the things that we described as expensive, it's good for Gloucesters, Matthews, other areas, King William just doesn't budget itself for this, for the same kind of need, but we do something with those, those points are always pushing.
Well, I'm up for a game.
Next day we have another board supervisor request that says, that's a lot that we've been here, I'll start with one, so it's easy stuff. Does Bill, do you think he wants to bring up and look into the board next coming months?
Only thing like grab this girl up and come back, mature or singular, to get over her.
For the rest of the camp.
The whole camp around you.
Now, not a first time to hear it now. We've covered a lot in this meeting, a lot of things we need to get caught up on, so I'm still processing that. I think we've come up with something.
I'll do it. The EDA, so we can have access to children's C D S or less sensitive?
I can make sure that that's provided as part of the twenty-second.
We have one.
Not a problem.
Next slide we have, we have to have closed session. I may move that being forwarded in a closed session permitted by Virginia Freedom of Information Act subsections two point two dash three, seven, eleven, A, seven, and eight, eight, to consult legal counsel regarding probable litigation on certain tax appeals or such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating post-rough public property and to consult and concede advice from the county attorney regarding tax appeals and directly relating related matters. Second, motion made, second, in discussion. Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. McCaffrey.
Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Uh, we're now closed session.